Good evening, this is Bloomington School meeting Monday, October 22nd, 7 p.m. All members are present and please stand and join me in the first allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Alright, recognition of students, staff, and public. First of all, it's going to be the Sheridan Story. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting ours in the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. Julie Campanelli, I'm going to have you come forward and introduce our friend for this evening, the Sheridan, from the Sheridan Story.
Can you hear?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Fujitaki, parents, teachers, and students. My name is Julie Campanelli and it is my honor to introduce you to a friend, not just a friend of Bloomington, but a friend to our community, Rob Williams, the executive director of Sheridan Story. For those of you who might not know about Sheridan Story, Sheridan Story through community, church community sponsorship provides four to five pounds of nutritious food directly to our children at the end of each school week by putting food into their backpacks for them to take home. Currently, we pass out 330 bags per week. Sounds impressive, right? But, please consider this, last year we distributed 11,000 meal bags to our elementary students. You might be asking yourself, well, why would we be putting food in children's backpacks? To answer this question, we have to take a quick dive into some data surrounding food insecurities. Food insecurities is defined as having a lack of consistent access to enough food for an active, healthy life. But it's important to know that hunger and food insecurities are really, they're closely related, but they're very distinct concepts. Hunger refers to having like a physical sensation of being hungry, but food insecurities refers to a lack of available financial resources for food at the level of the household. In Minnesota, currently, one in six children live with hunger each and every day. This amounts to 31 million missed meals each year just in our area. Of interest, children that live in suburbs, like our Bloomington children, are statistically more likely to skip a meal than their urban counterparts. Not having regular access to a balance of healthy nutrition foods has consequences on their mental and physical health, as well of what, what we're really important, is really important to all of us, their education. To put it another way, 1.6 billion is the cost to the state of Minnesota every year in healthcare, hospitalizations, medication, and education productivity at school. Food insecurities is a very real issue for our families and our students, and that is why I am so very, very grateful to our friend and partner, Sheridan Story. Please help me welcome and give thanks to Rob Williams from Sheridan Story. Thank you.
Good evening. I remember we were just talking about, we were in this room four years ago, and we had this idea of, I think the goal then was all the elementary schools. Can we get our program in all the elementary schools? At that time, our organization, the Sheridan Story, was one-year-old. We were working in 16 schools, I think, at that time, throughout the Twin Cities. Fast forward about four years, we work in almost 200 schools throughout the state. We serve about 6,000 kids a week, each weekend, and about 330, 350 of those are right here in the Bloomington district. We, we work in over 20 school districts, and I will say that Bloomington is one of the best ones that we've worked with as far as engagement with us, engagement with the community, willingness to admit the need in your district, which is in every school district. We work in, you know, I don't want to blank, call out names, but districts, we work in Edina, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, Anoka, and I've been all over throughout the state or the Twin Cities. And some schools and districts are not as receptive or willing to accept the fact of child hunger in their, in their community and their schools. I'm very grateful to have, to be working with Bloomington specifically, and the welcoming, but also the engagement and partnership, true, true partnership that we've had, I would say, with Bloomington district. I was, I've been, I think that what we do, making sure kids have food over the weekend, it's more than just the hunger pains that we were talking about, it's more than just the physical sensation of hunger. I, I think that if that was all that we were doing, it would be worth doing it just for that. But really, our goal is not simply to subside that feeling. It's to allow the kids to be kids, allow the kids to have a good shot at an education. I was told a story from, this is actually Principal Becky at Central Park Elementary in Roseville, but I think it's applicable throughout different districts and kids that we serve. She told me about a kid, this was last year she told me, a kid at her school who every Friday, really just for some reason was always acting up on Fridays. So much so that sometimes he couldn't even ride the bus home. And there was a specific Friday that he, same thing, he was kind of acting up, and he couldn't ride the bus home, and often Principal Becky ends up having to be the one to drive him home. This is a third grader. And, so she had to drive the kid home this, this Friday, and while the kid was in the backseat, he noticed like a granola bar sticking out of her bag or something, and he asked if he could have it. And as great as Principal Becky is, she wasn't, you know, it's still Friday, I love my principals, but still Friday, wanted to go home, not necessarily drive the kid home. So she was a little, you know, frustrated or whatever, but she was like, yeah, sure, fine, just take it, thinking that he just wanted a snack. But he didn't eat it, he put it in his pocket. And when they got to his house, Principal Becky hadn't ever really like gone up to the door to talk with the family or anything, but she decided to this time. So she walked up with the kid to the door and watched, he opened the door and watched as he, his five, his six little brothers and sisters ran up to him, all younger than him. And she watched as he broke the granola bar into six different pieces, giving one to each, a piece to each of his brothers and sisters, not keeping any of it for himself. And she told me, she told me that she realized then that the reason he was acting up on Fridays was because of the instability that he was facing over the weekend, not knowing if he was going to have something to eat. And she said, that's the importance of your program, it's that we want the kids to be able to learn, to be able to pay attention in class. You know, our program, our surveys, and there's actual like studies, you know, improve behavior, test scores, attendance, even self-esteem, and, you know, we view our role as allowing you to do your jobs. If, you know, if a kid's hungry, they're just not going to pay attention. And if we can remove that, that basic need, then we let you guys do your work, which is to teach the kids and help them to learn and, and grow up and, and have a great life. So, you know, I've, I view, we're supporting the kids and the families, but ultimately, it's so that you can do your jobs and teach the kids and make a long-term impact on their lives. So I'm very, very grateful for the partnership again that we've had with Bloomington, and we've got some great staff that we work with, both on the district level and at the schools. I think it's, yeah, 12, 12 of your schools now, about 1,000 meals a week, if you think of the contents of the bags. So I appreciate the, the welcome and the friends of the Bloomington schools. I also consider Bloomington schools one of the Sheridan Stories' friends, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Community Education Day proclamation, would someone like to read that?
Madam Chair. It is resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approve the attached proclamation declaring November 8th, 2018, as National Community Education Day, a celebration of community education programs and services.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation now. I want people to know this is actually, is, was done by the governor also, so it's from the state of Minnesota and signed by the governor, so. It says, whereas there is an increasing public call for all levels of government become more responsive to citizens' needs and desires, and whereas there is a limited amount of tax money and other resources, both human and physical, available to meet public demand for facilities, programs, and services, and whereas full use of existing public facilities, programs, and services is a desirable community goal, and whereas community education philosophy assumes that when local communities identify their own needs and resources, public agencies work cooperatively, and community betterment will result, and whereas agency coordination and cooperation improve public service and maximum, maximize the use of tax dollars, and whereas the involvement of local communities is essential to the development of community education programs, and whereas on Thursday, November 8th, 2018, Community Education Day will be celebrated throughout the United States. Now therefore, we join Mark Dayton, Governor of Minnesota, to hereby proclaim Thursday, November 8th, 2018, as Community Education Day. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, I'll take this over. We have Tamara Steve here to receive the proclamation. She is the Executive Director of Community Education.
Thank you Chair Steiglaff and School Board members and Superintendent Fujitaki for recognizing and celebrating community education on November 8th, but I think we could all say here, we feel like we are supported and celebrated every day of the school year and the partnerships that we have just across the school district and community, so thank you. With me today to accept the proclamation, I have some of my leaders, so Kelly McGowan, Metro South Director, Gina Miller, Director of Early Learning Services, Doug Langfeld, he is our leader in our building reservations and our activity centers. So we're very excited to just take a moment to celebrate our programs. So in looking at how we serve the community from birth to retirement, 365 days a year, pretty much, it's, in looking at the numbers, it's pretty exciting that I can say, in Metro South, over 900 Bloomington students last year. In early learning services, over 700 Bloomington students and families touched. And to our supreme leader of our activity centers and building reservations in Bloomington, at the highest peak of our membership, 2,500 memberships during those winter chilly months, amazing what our activity centers are doing, let alone the reservations and bringing in community members to use our facilities. Our Alex Locke could not be with, here with us tonight, but in Kid Safari, serving over 1,000 families currently in our before and after-school care program. And that's not even mentioning driver's ed, aquatics, youth enrichment, adult enrichment, learning exchange. So we're very proud of our program and very proud of how we serve our community. So on November 8th, in the week of November 8th, a few things that we're going to do to celebrate, $5 off on registration of some of our courses in youth enrichment and adult enrichment. We will have activity centers, they can, the members can bring a, a free guest that week. We have an open swim day, I believe that's November, I'm sorry, I, I lost it in my head, I think, November 6th, yes, 4:30 to 6:30, open swim. Our Kid Safari's programs are doing activities every single day. Early Learning Services has a STEM Family Night. Metro South has activities and gifts for the students and engaging them, and those are just a few of the things that we're doing to celebrate our community ed night and day. So, thank you so much again for your support, and we will take the proclamation back and begin our celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to have the student school board representative reports. Do you want to go first tonight?
Sure. Okay. So I'm Ally Starks, I'm Kennedy's representative, and I'm a junior. And we just came back from our BSAC meeting, which is the Board Student Advisory Council, where we talked about our main goal this year as being Bloomington unity between the two high schools. And we plan on doing that by somehow arranging a joint informal dance between the two schools. So that way, students don't have to go to prom to see their Jefferson friends at a dance. And we were discussing preconceived notions of other schools and how we're, how we plan to approach that problem, whether it be the views that Kennedy thinks Jefferson is or Jefferson thinks Kennedy is. And something that also came up was how we approach diversity in the schools and how we can better approach diversity in the schools from a student level. So that was what we talked about at the BSAC meeting. And at Kennedy, this past month, we had, a highlight was our Student Teacher Relationship Forum. So students and teachers came together for the whole day, and we discussed how we could improve student-teacher relationships. Because a step for learning is obviously learning the content, but being able to build relationships with your teacher that enhances your learning. It was an all-day forum led by the Institution of Educational Sciences for their dream studies. So we were not only learning about our school and our teachers, but they were also learning about us for their study. At our College and Career Center, some big visits that we had were the Dunwoody College of Technology, Dartmouth College, and the Reserve Officer Training Corps from St. Thomas. And those are pretty big because they were, there are three different pathways that a student can, that a student can go to, whether it be a two-year technical college, an Ivy League school, or Reserve Officer Training Corps, so the Army would be one of them. And the CCC, as we call it, will guide them through all three of those and actively encourages students to do just that. Gideon, the therapy dog, came in, and our mentors, Rana Haroun and Kristen Donnelly, guided us through stress relief techniques and tools that we can go through, and petting a dog is definitely one of those. This week, we have the National College Fair at the Minneapolis Convention Center, which is held on Wednesday and Thursday. And various FASSA Help Nights have been led by our CCC outside of school, and they're open for all families at Kennedy to go and learn how to receive financial aid. We had a band concert on October 11th, and the juniors took the piece at on the 10th, which hopefully we have a couple recipients of the National Scholar, Scholar, National The freshman retreat was on the 2nd of October, where incoming, the incoming freshman class of 2022 met with each other, our night mentors, and the Youth Frontiers to learn about respect in our school and respect between our peers and respecting ourselves. And our fall play, The Diary of Anne Frank, will be performed this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the 25th, 26th, and 27th.
That's all. Thank you.
My name is Jackson Damagala, I'm a senior at Jefferson High School. As Ally said, at Jefferson, though, the freshmen this year went on a field trip to the Activity Center for two days. The retreat is led by the Youth Frontiers. They talked about topics including team building, respect, leadership, and success in high school.
Can we try doing this one? Do we need to get closer?
Ninth graders were accompanied by our student mentorship, is, is good? Okay. The Bloomington-Jefferson High School Speech and Debateing earned significant recognition from the NHTNA. For the National Speech and Debate Association, the team is ranked among the top 20% of schools nationwide and earned membership in the Association's prestigious 100 Club. Also tomorrow, we want, we have the Blood Drive at Jefferson, where brave students will be donating their blood for the greater good. Moving into a big section of my report is fall sports. Coach, congrats Coach Larson of our Bloomington Athletic School Service Award she was awarded. Coach Larson was also selected for a 6AA Section Tennis Coach of the Year. Also with tennis, Isabel Lynch made it to the corner finals, finishing her amazing season at 18 and 4. For the boys' soccer team, they played a hard fought match in the third playoff game. Sadly, they lost, but the game was, I attended, was very cold, and I'm very sad to end the season, but I'm glad I don't sit in the cold anymore outside. Also, the Jefferson Jaguars girls volleyball team will have a bye on the first round and plan to face St. Louis Park at 7:00 PM on Thursday. We also had a great homecoming week, which was earlier this October, with the kids dressing up for Spirit Day, including Jersey Day and their class colors. I also enjoyed the packed gym at the dance itself, I mean packed cafeteria. It was my last homecoming, and I'm excited for even more for senior prom. Lastly, I'm sad to see MEA go by so soon, but ready to have a structure in my life again. Thank you.
I believe we have a student here for government class, so I have a statement to read. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend, our city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So if you would like to come up and say your name, your school, and your teacher, please.
Good evening, my name is Tommy Panvika, I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I'm a part of Mr. Starling's US Government Class.
Thank you. So you know that you can, after one hour, someone can sign your agenda for you? You can stay longer if you'd like, but one hour, I think, is the requirement. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Part A. Is there a motion to approve Part A?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, moving on to Part B. The first thing is the memorandum of understanding for Autism Mentorship Program, and I think that's Jennifer McIntyre, Special Counselor, is going to speak to that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I? It is resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the memorandum of understanding for the Autism Mentorship Program, a pilot program supported by the Autism Society of Minnesota, effective October 8th, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and School Board members, and student representatives, Superintendent Fujitaki. It is the, I hope that the board will pass the memorandum of understanding that we have. This started currently at Kennedy High School, it is a pilot program, it's the first in Minnesota, that the Autism Mentorship Program has designed in a collaboration across a number of different agencies in the interest of bringing together students who have graduated high school, that have fallen on the autism spectrum, with students who are completing high school, that have been identified in autism, to talk about, and to learn how to share kind of that social relationship and discussions about what things are like after high school and what to expect moving on into college, technical school, or onto work. So we have started this collaboration in discussion and in developing it and planning it to see what this could look like for our students to start at Kennedy High School. There are any questions as you read through the memorandum of understanding or anything involved with this?
Questions, anyone?
Madam Chair. Just quickly, Jennifer, thank you for coming. When I read through this, it, it excited me, I'm anxious to see how this will work. I'm all for this type of communication, so I appreciate the energy and the effort that was put into just sort of making this happen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I understand that those that will be the mentors, they're alumni of the Minnesota Life Academy. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So they're students who have attended the Minnesota Life Academy, which is based in Richfield, just our neighbor, and it's specifically chosen because they're students who have been identified with autism, who have experience after high school and attending college courses or attending really structured courses. They were picked because they were ideal for mentorship, and they work hand-in-hand with some of our folks at the University of Minnesota to be trained as mentors and to have an understanding of what it's like then to work with another student in explaining what life is like after high school. And so they were, they do a screening process, you have to interview for it, apply to be a part of it, and so they started to work first with the, the group there to, to bring together some students that are coming out of the Life Academy, so.
Great. I also think this is really valuable, because it, it could be the start of something really, really beneficial to all schools, and having known some students that are on the autism spectrum, that they, they learn from each other, and there's a lot that takes place with social-emotional learning. Is that one of the key things within this, the social-emotional learning, knowing how to react to different things in new settings, or?
There, thank you for that question. There are a couple of layers to that, and I think it'll be important to point out, yes, absolutely, learning from one another and learning those social cues, the social communication, reciprocal turn-taking when you come into an environment like a college type or a work environment, what that looks like, and then also generalizing that beyond. So what is that, kind of the anxiety, the fears that our students might be feeling about that as they're talking to other folks in their environment, and being able to share that with somebody who's been through it and perhaps felt some of that same anxiety or some of those same stressors, and being able to conceptualize it in a way that a student perhaps on the autism spectrum would want it described, is, is just a benefit of this program, so.
And, and just one other question was, was this something that you were approached with, or was this something that you went out and sought for our students?
So this was something I was approached with about a year ago, and when I discussed it, I took it to our team at Kennedy High School, because I have a couple of staff members there who I, I knew would really be interested in this opportunity to start and to bring some of the pieces together, and, and they right away jumped on and said, yes, we'd like to be a part of it. So they've been a part of a group through the course of the last about eight months that have really brought this advisory committee together, really brought the team together to say, how do we identify, screen, train, and work with the students? How do we identify the mentees, the students at Kennedy High School, and bring that together? And so we have a couple of our key staff members And so we have a couple of our key staff members at Kennedy High School who have been really instrumental in bringing this to life, um, in working with our partners, um, outside of Bloomington Public Schools.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. This is great.
Yeah, it's very exciting. I'm very excited for our team. Yes, yeah.
Anyone else?
And Jennifer, the, uh, the con, the concept. Excuse me, I, I don't want to say I'm getting choked up about this, but it's, it is significant. So AMP is going to provide all the support financially for their portion of it. We'll just provide our teachers. Are we going to have to require any more teachers as this gets going? And there might be more than, how many do you expect to start out in the pool?
Um, so to start, we have about five or six students who are starting. Um, I have two of our key, one of our, our classroom teachers, special education teachers, and then one of our social workers have been actively involved. And so you are correct in understanding the time and the financial commitment on, on the AMP side of it. They have come to the table with that. For Bloomington Public Schools, we have our, um, one of our special education teachers, Grady Garman, and then one of our social workers, Tara Mitchell, have been actively involved in partnering with them. So that has, and they've worked through the summer in doing meetings, um, at the Autism Society of Minnesota. They've gone to, to continue this out throughout the summertime. Um, so for us, as a, a school district, we have supported our teachers and our social worker in doing that. Um, to start, it is a pilot just to get it up and going, but I, I do anticipate this to grow because there's some true benefit for our students to participate and our staff, quite frankly.
And then follow up, this is just for the high school?
Right now, yes, it's just for the high school level.
Well, there might be something in transitions later on. Does AMP do anything with the transition program at all?
It may be an area for us to consider as we're really growing out our transition program and our pathways within transition program, but we wanted to design this first with the high school level to look at that age group.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I just want to, um, answer some of your question about, um, how we've connected. I was a board member there for many years before I ran for school board and they reached out to me and I reached out to Jennifer and said, you know, should we do this and what do you think? So I told her, you know, I don't, you have to look into it. I don't know if we can do it or not when, when I think when I first approached you about it, so, so I'm glad to see that it's happening. Um, one of the other things I wanted to say is, you know, many, many years ago, I used to go to the National Autism Conference when my son was diagnosed and he was little. And I saw especially like speakers that were on the spectrum that would come and speak and, um, other adults that were on the spectrum that came to the conference, I noticed that they had a very strong peer group and mentorship amongst them. So when I see this, I think that that's just, you know, what I used to see years ago from these people nationally. So I was so thrilled to see that someone wanted to try it here, so, thank you. All right, so I think we should vote. So all in favor of, of approving this memorandum of understanding, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, we have a few policies this evening. The first one is policy 702. Um, would someone like to read that? Madam Chair? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Okay, sure. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to policy 702 accounting.
Second. Okay, and we have Rod Zikovich that wants to, uh, speak to this.
Chair Saygoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. Uh, tonight, uh, there'll be five policies that I'm bringing to the board, uh, that have gone through the Board Policy Committee. Uh, this first one, 702, which is accounting, there's no changes to either the policy or the regulations.
Any questions for the first one? Okay. All in favor of the first one, please say, uh, which is policy 702, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Okay, the next one is 702.1. Someone like to read that one?
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves changes to policy 702.1, establishment and use of impressed cash funds.
Second.
Go ahead, Rod.
Um, this is a policy dealing with, uh, impressed funds or cash funds. Uh, what we tried to do with this is just, uh, kind of clean it up and then also tie it into the Office of the State Auditor, uh, what they require for policy purposes within governmental funds. So we've made those adjustments to both, uh, the policy itself and also the regulations attached.
Questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the next one, are you reading that, Director Corman?
Yes, um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves new policy 702.5, establishment and use of district credit cards.
Second.
Okay.
As we're going through policies and, and reviewing them, um, and going through the state auditors, uh, we noticed that as we do more and more, uh, credit card purchases within the district, um, everything is purchased online. Some companies only allow you to go through, online. Uh, we thought it, it would be beneficial to add a policy for credit card and use of credit card within the district, district credit cards. Uh, so this policy is a new policy to, um, deal with that. It's very similar to the policy for, um, the cash funds.
Thank you. Questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Okay, next one, policy 705. Who's reading that one?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
Be resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves changes to policy 705, investment of school district funds.
Second. Okay.
This policy really not, um, a change in actual policy. It's more of clarifying things within the policy itself, um, just summarizing things in the front, the actual regulations themselves of how we do things, how the, the district does things through operations, did not change at all.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the last policy is 725. One more. Director?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves changes to policy 725, tuition fees.
Second.
Um, with this policy, also, uh, very minor changes, uh, just to the purpose, putting it into the format that most of our policies are. And then within the regulation area, there was just one word added to clarify, uh, one of the topics.
Questions, anyone? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that the pol, people, not the school board, other people, um, that the policy committee has already reviewed all these before they ever come to the board and have worked on them and worked with the administration on them, so.
Can I speak to that just for a minute?
Hmm?
Can I speak to that just for a minute?
Yes, you should.
Yes, because we met last week and we actually probably met for about an hour and a half, so we didn't, I know we kind of go through pretty quickly in the board meeting, but we gave a lot of consideration, a lot of conversation throughout these policies and some, so much conversation, we had to pull back and administration had to go back and rework some things, so, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff going into these policies.
Thank you for your work, committee.
No problem.
Mr. Star.
Just, just add what the chairman of the committee said, and we thank you all, the rest of the board, for, uh, not getting into some of the questions that we had when we were in the committee, you know, the various investment funds and everything else. If you are, are curious about it, I'm sure Director Bennett would be more to share with you.
Our open meetings and it can come anytime.
Yeah, that's true.
I think it's important, though, because we, we did have someone ask us once after a board meeting, how we could approve those so fast. So I thought, well, people don't understand that they've already been through, you know, all of your discussion and then we already get the packet last week to read them and have any questions answered. So it's important for people to know that, so. All right, so moving on to board member reports. Who would like to go first tonight?
I'll, I'll make it quick.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to tag into, uh, the conversation about the policy meeting. We, we did have a policy meeting. Uh, Tom is the chair, uh, Jim and myself stood on that, that meeting and Tom touched on it, uh, I think we had eight policies that came, eight or nine that came and, uh, a couple, three were taken back for consideration for rewording and just some more investigation. But I do really appreciate the, um, the energy that, uh, that committee has. Um, it's, it's an interesting, um, setup. We sit, the committee sits on one side, administration sits on the other and, and we worked over the policies really well. I mean, we do that every time we have a policy meeting, but, um, we do ask a lot of questions. Like Tom said, it was an hour and a half meeting. I'm sure we could have made it go a little bit longer, but, uh, we do put a lot of thought, energy, and effort into the questions, into, um, making sure that they make sense, uh, before we bring them to the board as a whole. So I appreciate the, uh, the, um, consideration that the, that the rest of the board has, that, uh, the committee has done their work. Um, I managed to attend a parent-teacher conference. Uh, I, I have, happen to have a, a junior over at Kennedy. And, um, I just want to say that from a parent's pers, perspective, going into the gym, finding the, finding my way around, uh, uh, I'm, I'm impressed with, um, sort of how streamlined it is, how it works. Um, I know that I've heard from some people, maybe it's not the, you know, the ideal situation, but I don't think there ever will be an ideal situation for parent-teacher conferences. Um, I really appreciate the fact that if there's a teacher that has a line of parents waiting to, to talk to them, they don't rush the conversation with the parent that, that's in front of them. The parent that's in front of them is the parent that's, that, that they're concerned with at that moment. And it, it takes whatever time it takes to get through that conversation and you're allowed to ask questions, uh, they have data, they have, uh, information. Um, and, and just as a side note, they, they know your student. They know your son, they know your daughter. Um, and they can tell an anecdotal story that might corroborate that they actually know your students. So, um, overall, I'm, I'm really pleased with the, with the process. Um, also had an opportunity to, um, attend a PTA meeting over at Washburn. Um, uh, just want to say a quick, uh, word of thanks to all of our PTA members, um, all to, all of our PTSA members and all of our volunteers that make our students, um, experience in school and the staff's experience in school that much better. We, we just couldn't do it without all the volunteers. And, uh, you know, if you're looking for some time to give back to your community, uh, talk to, uh, the front desk at, uh, your child's school, all, all 15 of the schools. Uh, you can look up a PTA, uh, contact on the, on the, the school's webpage. There, there's, you can have an hour worth of volunteering, you can have the whole school year worth of volunteering. There's all sorts of opportunities, so don't be shy if you're looking for a way to give back, um, looking into a PTA is a great way to start. And I'll end my report with that.
Anyone? Go, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, call attention to a, a few of us attended the Bloomington Hall of Fame Award Ceremony that's held every year in October where we honor Kennedy former athlete or dignified athlete or member of the commi, community who's done so much for our BAA and our schools. And, um, and we also then honor several members of the community who have done, um, wonderful things for it. But it's just interesting to note that this has been going on now for quite a few years and we still honor several members of the community who are doing so much for BAA, for Jefferson, Kennedy, booster clubs and so on like that, coaches. And, uh, and we're really fortunate to have as many people participating in the coaching and helping our youth grow to be good sports and, um, and, uh, and good students also. So that was, that was always been a fun time. A second, um, event I participated in was the Artistry Hall Annual Meeting. And that's held over at the city and there were about 170 people there. It's usually their, they call it 76 trombones in order to, um, disguise the message that it's a fundraiser. And, um, that's always important because artistry has become one of our very important partners with our school, with our schools. And, um, it's just great to know that besides all the members of the community and the athletic arena, we have all these fine arts resources that we can call upon to make sure that our students are well-versed and have as many mentors as possible. Amen.
I can speak. Um, well, as an educator, I'd like to, um, kind of give you a little bit of a report on the progress of my Global Learning Fellowship. Um, I was able to attend the, the workshop, the first workshop for the fellowship, uh, about a week, two weeks now, two weeks ago in Washington DC. So for three days, um, I joined, um, educators, one educator per state from all around the country and other education experts in a symposium that was very, um, eye-opening, you know, when we, many educators talked about the different needs of our students all around the country. So that was, that was very interesting. And then, uh, for two days, we engaged in a workshop with a professor from Harvard University who will be, who will be leading us in, um, in the curriculum that we're going to be building to deliver to our students in the classrooms, um, for the next nine months until we see each other in Africa, in South Africa next year. But what I wanted to share with you was a little bit of the work that we did there and to let you know that we're going to be working on the sustainable development, developmental goals that are, that come from the United Nations, uh, with the idea of, uh, promoting empathy in the classroom and in the communities, that we don't only, um, have our kids in the classrooms to, uh, provide academics, but also to encourage other skills, life skills and social skills and this, um, awareness of the world, that the world that we live in, it's not only for us, but it's, it's for everyone and it is everybody's responsibility to make this place a better place. So it's not only, um, about how we're going to prepare our kids for the changing worlds, but how we're going to encourage our kids to be part of that change and to do something so that that change takes place. And so that they're also not ready just for the world, not ready to receive it, not with open hands, but that they use their hands to make that change, to make it happen. So it's something that will impact my work as an educator, but as I see it, it would also impact my, the work that I do as a school board member and as a member of the community in Bloomington. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I just have a couple things. Um, I was able to attend the Westwood Fun Fair and the Westwood Read-a-Thon, and I think it was their first Read-a-Thon and, um, it turned out really great. And I got to tell you, some of our staff were really rocking the costumes for that. Um, some of them were, they really got into it. And so I think the kids were, um, really excited and, um, had a really good time, so I hope it was successful for them. Uh, I also attended the, um, CCAT, what we call CCAC meeting. That is the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, or Council, maybe. Um, but what, what I wanted to say about that is, for people that don't know, is that is a group that is mandated by the state to have, um, that's, but luck, luckily, um, we live in a district that actually had it before it was ever mandated. Bloomington had one before the mandate, so I guess we were ahead of the time back then. But, um, that is made up of, um, staff, um, community, and primarily parents of students receiving special education services. And I just want to, one of the topics that they talked about is having, um, someone from the police department come and talk to them and talk about training that police are receiving now, now around, um, you know, mental health and people with disabilities and de-escalating. And also, but they were also interested in what, what the families were very interested in, what they could do to help their children in case the police ever did come in preparing them. And so I thought it was a very good topic and, um, I think they're going to, um, have that and later this year, hopefully, that they'll be able to do that. So, that's it, thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. Three topics. First, city council is holding a special meeting this Thursday. Three topics. First, City Council is holding a special meeting this Thursday, October 25th, at 7:30 AM, and they're going to talk about the proposed new community center. I will be in attendance. Second topic will be, the city has invited me to participate in a city staff meeting and they're going to be talking about proposed capital improvement needs for the community. I'm bringing along several staff members to help with that conversation. Finally, thanks to the Legal Women Voters, they provided volunteers at both our high schools to, for qualified students to register to vote. That concludes our report, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Any other business to come before the board? All right, seen none. It's adjourned.